All right, everyone, we're going to go ahead and get started tonight. Good evening and thank you for coming. My name is Melissa Ray and I'm the President/CEO for the Concord Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the Concord Chamber, it is my honor to welcome the candidates in our audience to the Concord Chamber of Commerce's Candidates Forum for Districts 1 and 5 and City Treasurer. The District 3 candidate is running unopposed and has opted to allow more time for the current candidates to share their platforms. The Chamber is proud to be celebrating 85 years in the community and we are pleased to host this event in the interest of increasing voter awareness in the November election. I would like to mention this forum will be recorded and available to view on the Chamber's YouTube channel after we receive it and able to upload it. Here's how the evening is going to go. Tamara Steiner, our Government Economic Policy Committee Chair, will be asking the candidates a series of questions and will alternate the order of response for each question. These questions were received in advance from the members of the Concord Chamber of Commerce and the community, and we will also take questions from those in the audience. If you have a question for the candidates, please grab one of the note cards in the hallway with some pens and William will come around to pick them up and then bring them up to the front. We will begin by giving each candidate two minutes to make an opening statement. Each candidate will then have one minute to answer each question, then we will conclude the forum with one-minute closing statements from each candidate. The answering order for each section has been randomly generated. This is the first time the Chamber had a contested City Treasurer election in recent years. Although her opponent declined to appear, incumbent City Treasurer Patty Barsati is here to explain the scope and responsibilities of the City Treasurer. Ms. Barsati will be asked the same questions as all the council candidates and will answer those within her scope of responsibilities and will pass on the others. Candidates, I will ask, and as you begin responding, I will start a one-minute timer or two minutes for the beginning. The light will appear green when you start your answer and then turn yellow when you have 20 seconds left. When your time is up, the light will turn red and a buzzer will sound. You will need to stop your answer at that point. We also have the timer on the TVs in the back for your ease of sight. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Tamara, who will be moderating the remainder of the forum.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight to the Greater Chamber of Commerce Candidates Forum. We have some interesting issues addressing Concord coming up and we'll have an opportunity to hear from each one of the candidates on their views on those. Does anybody have any questions on... My mic? The green light is on. Oh, so I do have to lean forward. Okay. She said, "Don't lean forward, it's too loud." Okay, I'm here. Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the format or the process or anything? We won't be breaking for intermission, so no potty breaks. I'm going to introduce everybody and when I call your name, if you could kind of raise your hands so people in the audience know who you are. Let's start with Patty Barsati, who is running for City Treasurer. She's the incumbent and her opponent declined to appear tonight. So we will leave it up to Patty to answer the questions that fall within her scope of duty and pass on those that don't. So it's a new way of doing it. Then on the end, we have Quinn Anderson. She is running in District 1. We have Laura Hoffmeister, the incumbent in District 1, and we have Robert Ring, also running in District 1. And then in District 5, we have Tim McGallion, who is the incumbent, and we have challenger Laura Nakamura in that corner. So are we ready? Are we ready to start? Everybody will have two minutes to make their opening statement and then we'll start the questions. So let's start with opening statements. We'll start with Patty.
Thank you. It's nice to see everyone here. And I'll turn on my mic. Can you hear me now? Great. I wanted to share with you just a couple of things about me and maybe why I'm running. My husband and I, Rocky Barsati, out there in the audience, we moved to Concord in 1979 from San Francisco. We wanted to raise children in a safer area with no parking meters and good neighborhoods. So we've been here most of the time since there. We've raised our whole family and our daughter's still in Concord. Myself, as a lifelong volunteer, I've been very involved in Kiwanis since 1990. I've gone so far as to be the International Trustee, so when I get involved, I get involved. I've worked in this community since 1981. I worked for Bank of America and I was there when we built that big building that we moved to, and now I see they've moved out of it. So I've been here quite a while. I've been involved in other organizations, including the Chamber of Commerce, from ambassador to being on the board, the Finance Chair. And I noticed when this job opened as City Treasurer, I felt I should volunteer to run for that. It's a part-time job, but it matches my financial background very clearly. So I really enjoyed being in the treasurer for the last five years. You elected me once before and I hope that you will elect me again. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll start with Patty Barsati for the questions. Patty, can you describe for the audience and for the rest of us what the City Treasurer does, your duties, and the scope of the responsibility for that job?
I will. My financial background is quite a bit of help to me. I'm really sort of an advisor to the staff as far as the... not the whole finance of the city, but I'm there involved in the investment policies, in the policy... investment policy. And what I do is I take a look at the numbers. I make sure that the cash flow for the city will be covered by our numbers and present a couple of reports to the City Council related to that. I follow the mandate that our funds, the liquidity, safety, and the return are the most important items for our funds. I'd like to also let you know that since I've been in office, that we've always had enough cash to cover the next six months and have never really worried about that. So I hope to be able to continue playing that important role in the city of Concord.
Great, thank you. Our next question, we will start... What? Oh, I'm sorry, the opening statements. Melissa handed me a script and I'm not following it. Okay, the rest of you will have two minutes to make your opening statement and we'll start with Quinn Anderson.
I remembered to turn it on this time. Hi, everybody, my name is Quinn Anderson. I moved to Concord just under six years ago, also from the city, ready to be in a safer, quieter, more private place where I had a greater sense of community. It's taken me a little while to really make Concord my home, started by adopting a dog from ARF and volunteering there for a little while, and then, you know, I was doing the commute to and from South San Francisco. I work in the biotechnology sector, so the office is down there. And when COVID hit, we obviously were no longer commuting to the office, and that gave me three and a half hours of my life back every day, where I've kind of, I guess, finding my own new renaissance, I suppose. I started a whole bunch of new hobbies and teaching myself how to fix things around the house and I like really investing in myself and my home in Concord, you know, making it more beautiful and the place that I want it to be. And I've spent the past couple of years doing that inside and now I want to focus a little more externally because I am making Concord my home. I own my home here and I want to participate firsthand in the process of advancing the community in the way that I want to see it develop.
Good evening and thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this Candidates Forum. I'm Laura Hoffmeister. I'm currently on the City Council and I've served also in the capacity of Mayor and Vice-Mayor for the city several times over. I was first elected in 1997 and the reason I ran then is the same reason I'm running now, is I want to give back to my hometown. I grew up in Concord, went to all the local public schools, Mountain View, El Dorado, graduated Concord High and went to UC Davis, where I earned my degree in city and environmental planning and a minor in geology. I think those attributes are very helpful for me, being on the City Council over the years, and I've been honored to be able to serve you in that capacity. Looking forward, in our community, I see that we need to continue to maintain our balanced budgets and I'm happy to say that we have a 30% reserve, and I was on the council when we established that reserve policy. We need to work on our homeless issues, expand homeless outreach, and mental health teams. I've supported new crime prevention efforts, most recently with more license plate readers and public safety using aerial drones that can assist in children that are gone or elderly that might wander away or other issues that our police department feels that they're appropriate for. Also supported and approved the $120 million in street improvement repairs that are starting away already and will be doing more in the next two years. Created economic development strategies to attract and retain our business. But more needs to be done and I think we need experienced leadership. I've served on the City Council during some great issues, which was 9/11, the Great Recession, and here we are in a pandemic and post-pandemic recovery. I think my experienced leadership is going to be needed as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, Robert?
Yes, thank you for inviting me tonight. I'm grateful to be here. My name is Robert Ring and I've been in... I'm a Concord resident and I've been in business for a little over about a decade now. I'm a banker, I've been in management, do a little bit in real estate, just personal investing, things like this. And I'm a leader in both the business sector and I would say the nonprofit sector. I've been appointed and elected to numerous nonprofit boards in our community, where I've served to combat human trafficking with Pillars of Hope, where at the time we were the only nonprofit in Contra Costa County that housed victims of human trafficking, working very closely with state senate and local DA to help victims of human trafficking. I know what it takes to work with others and to solve challenging problems and to get things done, and that's why I'm touting my record in banking and in management and solving complex problems in the nonprofit sector, and I'm happy to elaborate on that if anybody has questions. You know, I wouldn't be running if I was satisfied with the status quo and the direction that Concord's been going in. And, you know, as a resident of Concord and as a family man, there are certain things that I want to see addressed in Concord. You know, one thing I was always wondering about is why are our roads in such bad condition? You know, we don't have terribly inclement weather here in Concord, we don't put salt on our roads. We've got money from the state to go towards road maintenance, we pay into taxes that go towards general road maintenance, yet you drive down roads all over the city where there's crumbling roads, large potholes, and, you know, there's things that could be addressed that have not been. And so I believe that Concord needs a new, fresh face to lead it into the future and I believe I am the man for the job. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Tim McGallion.
All right, thank you. Hi, everyone, my name is Tim McGallion. I'm your former mayor and your current council member for District 5. I'm a longtime Concord resident who is raising my school-aged children here and a longtime volunteer in the community with a passion for making a difference. I'm proud of the relationships I've formed in this community, and these relationships and partnerships have helped us all through the best of times and the most difficult of days, like creating a food logistics center during the pandemic to support our city and regional partnerships with the Food Bank, the White Point Express, Monument Crisis Center, to distribute over 3 million pounds of food, clothing, and personal items to families. But it's also about celebrating Concord. One of my proudest volunteer achievements was saving the Concord July 4th festival and fireworks. I stepped in to rally the community, raise the funds, and produce this safe, family-friendly event. Since joining the City Council, I've led on pivotal issues, including $120 million capital improvement plan to fix our roads over the next five years and installing license plate reader cameras to help us with public safety. I'm proud that Concord itself is leading in building affordable housing for all income levels and we're seeing development happening right now in our downtown with even more to come. I led on hiring a new community service manager who will coordinate our new programs and work with the county to support our unhoused. Over the last four years on the Concord City Council, we've done extensive long-range planning and now we'll be executing on those plans into the future. This includes working with our state and federal leaders to bring home the money to Concord to help us with our infrastructure, traffic safety, and improvements. My goals are to ensure we provide the services necessary to maintain a high quality of life for residents and maintain a desirable place to live, work, and play. This includes attracting new businesses in partnership with the Greater Concord Chamber of Commerce and my economic development team in seeking new sources of revenue to secure a vibrant and financially sound future for Concord. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Laura Nakamura.
Good evening, everyone.
Turn your mic on.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to the Chamber for hosting this event. I'm Laura Nakamura and I'm running for Concord City Council to represent District 5. Concord has been my home for over 30 years. I've raised two children here and I've both rented and owned, I've been stuck in traffic, I've biked to work, I've coached soccer, I've attended church, and I've volunteered in my community. I have a real desire to foster positive change in Concord, Concord is home. My involvement at the local level started in a bike lane. My inspiration to make a difference locally comes from transformative faith-based programs such as Just Faith. I'm a progressive Catholic moved to action by the social teachings of the Church on topics like care for creation, for our neighbors, justice, labor, and solidarity. I've also been influenced by ideas which directly address the challenges mid-sized cities face, including building resilient cities using the incremental approach of strong towns, and also Urban Habitat, an organization focused on land, housing, and transportation justice. For the past six years, I've been advocating for public safety in the form of safer streets for more walkable, bikeable city. I'm a healthcare worker, my day job is taking diagnostic images of hearts for all ages, and in 2021, I was appointed to Concord's Community Services Commission. I have been engaged and participating in our local government, both regionally and locally, with organizations like East Bay Alliance for a Sustainable Economy, Bike East Bay, Contra Costa Transportation Authority as a member of their Vision Zero Working Group. My priorities are equity, sustainability, and quality of life for residents. We have a need for more transparency, deeper engagement, and growing partnership between city, government, and residents. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next question, some of you have probably pretty well covered it. If that's the case, you can either shorten your answer or you can expand on what you've already said. The second question, we'll start with Tim McGallion. What engagement have you had in civic affairs, specific civic affairs, that prepares you to make decisions for the city?
I think over the last 15 years that I've been actively involved with the city of Concord, my civic affairs are pretty... go pretty deep and it starts, honestly, I tell people, it started with a wave meeting with... meeting someone, Dick Allen, who brought me into the Concord Chamber of Commerce many years ago, and it went from there. I served in a number of capacities with the Chamber, but then eventually grew that into serving on the Planning Commission as the City Treasurer and then eventually elected to the City Council. But throughout the community itself, I too have served as a Little League coach, as a Cub Scout and Boy Scout leader, and have gotten actively involved in my children's school and have truly been able to engage and understand all the different aspects that goes into just being a parent and someone who's been able to actively love this community. We talked about being involved with the Fourth of July, and I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the Taste of Concord is coming up with the Concord Kiwanis. And so I've truly loved being involved in this city and thank you for everything that it's brought me.
Thanks, Tim. Laura Nakamura.
Thank you. My civic engagement, like I mentioned, began in a bike lane. I started bike commuting to work and realized I saw our city from a whole different perspective and realized that we had a lot of work to do on our roadways to make it safer so that we can get more people out of their cars and onto other multimodal ways of transportation. Shortly after that, I started doing some advocacy work for tenant protections in our city. I realized that there was a great need during the housing crisis to stand up and speak up for many of our low-income families, especially in the District 3 in the Monument area, who were facing housing instability and evictions. And it's also an immigrant community and I really felt like they needed the help with advocacy so that we can stabilize our community because I believe that if, when everyone is... feels safe at home, our whole community and our business community does well.
Thank you. And next, Robert Ring.
Yes, thank you for the question. I've been engaged in a number of ways, one of which is by volunteering with local organizations, one of which raise tens of thousands of dollars to give to young children that are graduating from high school here in Contra Costa County and going into college. I think that's very important. Again, as I mentioned, I've worked with our local nonprofit Pillars of Hope as an appointed Board of Director to combat human trafficking and raise awareness, which unfortunately is very prevalent here in, even in the city of Concord. And so these are things that I want to continue to work on. I've also walked up and down the streets and talked to neighbors and asked the same questions that many of you are asking, why our roads are in disrepair, why the Concord Naval Weapons Station is not off the ground, how are we handling our homelessness crisis, and how do we address rising crime and underfunded public safety? So I've definitely been very engaged and now I would hopefully, if elected, would like to do something about these things that would bring progress to Concord.
Thank you, Robert. And Quinn Anderson.
Yes, my engagement in civic, I guess, started civic duties, I suppose, it started in my first professional job, my first real job, was at a nonprofit organization down in LA called the Westside Infant Family Network, and our focus was bringing resources to bear for the underserved communities of Los Angeles, typically families in poverty. There was a heavy focus on the BIPOC community, and so I think it started there. More locally, I have done some volunteering with Ocean Beach Cleanup, and then separately from a specific area, I volunteer for Vote Forward, which is a nonpartisan organization that writes letters, handwrites letters, and hand addresses letters to people all over the country to encourage them to register to vote and to go vote.
Thank you. Patty?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, no. Laura Hoffmeister.
Thank you.
I can't read.
When I got out of college and came back to this area, I got engaged with the Chamber of Commerce and the partnership that the Chamber had with the city at that time had a program called Leadership Concord, and I completed that academy and that led me to being involved in the city's redevelopment advisory committee and then being appointed to the city's design review board. I've also been involved in American Association of University Women, the Concord Diablo Rotary Club, the Concord Historical Society, the Seniors Club in Concord, and the Friends of the Concord Library. In addition to that, I've also been involved in the UC Davis Scholarship Committee for Contra Costa County. As a council member, I've also been able to attend the mayor's conference and was selected as the chair of the mayor's conference from all of the other mayors in Contra Costa County and served on that. I've also been involved in the East Bay Economic Development Alliance, which is about jobs to the East Bay, and the John Muir Healthcare Benefit Fund, and also the... I'm a past chair and current board member of County Connection, have been serving on that as well.
Thank you, Laura. Now Patty.
Thank you. As I mentioned a little earlier, Kiwanis has been my passion for serving young children, usually. We do the Taste of Concord, as Tim mentioned, where we engage the key clubbers, they're the students in high school, they're the cream of the crop, and we teach them to volunteer. We get them engaged in volunteering, and they say, "Once a student volunteers," they make... continue that for a lifetime. So I'm very happy to be in that. I have a whole list here, but I think I want to say, as many of the things that I've been involved in throughout the city and local communities has helped me understand people, what they're going through, what's going on around, and I love to get involved wherever I can help. I want to say I'm in an elected women's group in Contra Costa County, very interesting conversations there. Also was in a leadership program where we learned a lot about what's going on.
Thank you. Okay, this next question, we want to take a little deeper dive into what informs your decision-making, and the question is what principles inform your decision-making in creating public policy? What are the principles that you stand on? And we start with Quinn with this one.
Well, I can't speak for decision-making in public policy as I don't... I think that's probably, she's going to be the one, for District 1 to be able to say that firsthand. But I run the customer success and experience function at the company I work for, and the focus of that is really customer advocacy. My job is really to go push other teams around at my company and tell them how they can do better for our customers and work with them to enable that. When I'm looking at how things can be improved in the business world, I look at... I try to see things from every angle. I try to see, I mean, if there's two sides, customer and business, I see what the business needs, what the business is asking for, and what their constraints are, and then I sit in the customer's seat and go, "What are they asking for? What are their constraints?" And I try to take that empathetic, holistic view of the situation in making decisions.
Thank you. And this one is Patty.
Thank you. I do a lot of decision-making in the various organizations that I'm involved with. We work on the investment policy for the city together, and I've always been for openness and honesty. As a banker, I've had a fiduciary responsibility and I know what that means, and I take that seriously. And that is very useful in the position that I have now. I truly believe in the ethical treatment, the fair treatment, and the positive speaking of others, even in a race like this, and that's really one of my guiding principles throughout my life. I'm just going to tell you on the funny side, take it however you want to, but I'm a Libra and I think they wrote up that position for the way I feel about things.
Thank you. And Tim McGallion?
They're calling on you.
You want me to reread the question?
Yeah.
It's been a while.
Sure.
"What principles inform your decision-making in creating public policy?"
Sure. So I think in creating public policy, it really comes down to making sure that, number one, you're always accessible to community, and I think it's being able to understand the community values and what's happening within community because, of course, you're going to get a lot of outside influences that are not necessarily what's going on inside your community. And I think, and I feel that's very, very important because Concord is a very unique place. And so we have to make sure that we continue to make sure that the silent majority is also heard, and we need to make sure that the right information is being brought to us, and that's why we take the time to be able to meet with community, meet with staff, meet with stakeholders. And being able to craft policy that actually you have an opportunity to look at short-term and long-term effects, because there's a lot of times where you can make rast decisions and they're not very good and they're not beneficial. And so really being able to lay out what is that, you know, 10-year time horizon on this decision we're going to make? Or is this something that needs to be dealt with right now? And we come up with an urgency ordinance. So there's a lot of elements that we can take into consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. Laura Hoffmeister.
Sure, thank you. I would echo some of what Councilwoman McGallion just... or Tim McGallion just said. In addition, what I look at is pretty much the facts. That's one of the things that guides me is what are the facts of the matter? And then what's the public input? What is the community or those that are interested in the issue? What are their views? Also, what are the legal parameters? A lot of times, people may say, "We want you to do this," but, and that may seem rational or logical, but it's not legal. And so we have to take a look at that, and that's one of the things that guides me as well. I also look at, is it fair and does it improve and better our community? And again, if it's a financial matter or a business coming in, is it going to help out and better in terms of economic situation, either our budget or the economy overall? And what is the budgetary impacts of decisions? And then, again, reviewing the reports and listening to what the community has to say.
Thank you. And Robert?
Yes, so the question is, what... can you say the question again? I'm sorry.
What principles inform your decision in making public policy?
Sure, it's a great question. So two things, two questions I ask a lot when I'm assessing, you know, policy, you know, I've not like made public policy, right, but I've definitely studied it, are, what are the unintended consequences of the policy? You can point to a lot of public policies that have been made with great intentions and terrible unintended consequences, and then subsequent policies that were made to address the unintended consequences of the great intentioned policy it had to start with. The other one that you'd really want to ask is, what are the... does this policy, or could it have the potential to have a disparate impact? Meaning, a well-meaning policy that could unintentionally, or maybe, you know, usually it's unintentionally, impact people, maybe that are in minority groups, vulnerable populations, people that were not intended for to impact. These are super important things to study. The other thing I would look at is, is it fair? Does it benefit residents of Concord? Is it an overall good policy? You know, sometimes when I've been in organizations, people say, "We can't do that." You know, I'll raise my hand and say, "Why?" And I've been able to bring a lot of good change and necessary improvements to groups that I've been fortunate enough to be involved with.
Thank you. Thank you. And finally, Laura Nakamura.
Thank you. My values inform me. I'm not making policy right now.
I'm not making policy right now, but I have been on the advocacy side, pushing for policy change with regards to the most vulnerable in our community. And when, I know that when the most vulnerable and the most marginalized in our communities are taken care of, then we all can do better. I appreciate what Robert said about the, basically was the Gare, the Gare questions, is the government alliance for racial equity questions ask, asks us, they prompt us to ask, who benefits from this decision? Who is burdened from this decision? And when we look at policy, let's, I'll take, for example, tenant protections. 90% of landlords for Concord don't even live in Concord, but 100% of their residents do. And that's a statistic I heard once that has set. And I will keep reminding people of that when, when they say we can't have tenant protections in our city.
Thank you. Okay, our next question, we will start with Robert Ring. What are the three most important issues facing both your district and the city as a whole? And what steps do you plan to take to address these? And you have one minute.
Okay, thanks. I wish the question was phrased, what are the top four? Because I really believe there's four. So I'll address three, but I'll list the four. It's homelessness, crime, housing and infrastructure. On, on all three of those, I'm unfortunately very intimately familiar with homelessness crisis. My brother-in-law died on the streets. He was homeless. I think a lot needs to be done there. You can go to my website, ringforconcord, to read about that issue. But I think we need to really look at how we can help greater improve helping people with severe mental illness, substance abuse and alcohol addiction. I think public safety, we cannot afford to underfund our first responders. It's really important to have public safety. If you don't have public safety, I really don't think you have a city where people want to invest in, businesses want to be in and people would like to live in. So, and then housing, we absolutely have to build housing. One of the reasons we have, you know, kind of a widening, I would say, gap in, in the middle class to the rich is because there's not enough homes in the Bay Area. And, you know, we're responsible for pushing that forward, bringing jobs here to build those homes and get people into homes. And that alleviates the crisis of high housing prices. And I'm way over my time, I'm sorry.
I just checked with Melissa. If we, if we have time after all the questions are asked, we will come back and revisit this question because it is complicated. There's more to it than what you can answer in one, all of you than what you can answer in one minute, okay? The next one is Laura Hoffmeister. One minute.
Thank you. Well, I agree with Robert. Homelessness, public safety are two very key items. And certainly as we look at infrastructure, that's also important in terms of those top three. I think what's being happened, what I've been able to do on that is help create a city core program. We used to share CORE, which is Community Outreach for those that are unsheltered. And we shared that with two other cities. We thought this was an important enough issue in our community to bring our own team here to service those in our community. Supporting the mental health evaluation teams that can go out and be responders to those types of calls so that unburdens our police department. And also the A3 program, which is anywhere, anytime, any place that the county is standing up to be able to provide additional services for those with mental health or drug substance abuse issues. Public safety is very important and key. And again, trying to find technology and other methods to support our police department and enhance our public safety. And affordable housing, we have 1,200 units that have been approved and we've got about 3,500 under construction now.
Thanks, Laura. Quinn?
Yeah, that's a meaty question. I would say, social justice is a big issue. And that I think encompasses a few issues like homelessness, addressing the unhoused situation and public safety in a compassionate and culturally sensitive way. I think smart growth for the city is important as well. That includes things like thoughtful planning for building, improved transit and doing all of that in a sustainable manner. You know, we're in California and we're supposed to be leaders in, in things like sustainability. And we're the largest city in Contra Costa County, so we should be the leader of our county. And then the third one, I would say, progress with the Concord Naval Weapons Station. It's in our district, but it affects everybody in Concord, how that is developed and when it's developed and what is included in that. So that's the first part of the answer.
Thank you. Laura Nakamura.
Thank you. Equity, sustainability and quality of life for residents. Quality of life, including public safety on our roadways. We are experiencing more and more vehicular violence. Sustainability because, in the, in the form of needing more green infrastructure, opting for the greenest of green technology that we can, including making sure that we have workforce transition into those jobs. And equity, making sure that our population is stable and our community is safe is, are the, those are the three. Did you say five? Affordable housing and stability too, thank you.
Okay, and Patty, where's Patty?
Was that the 19?
Yeah, probably doesn't apply. It's what, what are the main issues in your district and as a city and the city as a whole? And how do you plan to address those?
I would like to say that I've heard the city council address a lot of the issues that were brought up. Those are all good. I'm not going to compete with them. But I think someone should have mentioned the finances of the city. The finances of the city are what make these things happen. And people need to understand about the funds that we have and what we have availability to spend and get involved in the budgeting every year. I do think our city staff does a good job taking care, putting the budget together, which is a huge project, and managing that budget. I don't manage it, but I just want to say how important the finances are.
Thank you. And Tim McCallion.
Sure. No, Patty, so Patty, thank you for mentioning good governments and balanced budget. That is definitely overlooked at times because in order to do that, then we can fund everything else, right? But I think it's really clear, public safety and in maybe no particular order because we have to work on these collectively and this is the balancing act as city council members we have to deal with. Public safety, it's infrastructure and traffic safety, it's housing and homelessness. As we deal with public safety, it's clear, I mean, there's a lot of technology that can be used as force multipliers, whether it be LPR cameras, use of drones. But it's also staffing and we have to make sure we address that. From an infrastructure perspective, it's our complete streets program. It's also dealing with fiber, making sure we have connected traffic signals and working with all the different agencies like myself with CTA and the federal government. And housing and homelessness, it's our homeless strategic plan. It's our CORE, our MET, our Community Services Manager. It's being able to find all those connected elements. And then as a housing, as it relates to housing, it's also building all the new housing that's going on around the city as well, which is pretty impressive right now.
Great, thank you, Tim. Okay, the, this is a Chamber of Commerce candidate's forum. And so we tend to look at a lot of issues from a business standpoint. And this question is, how do you define pro-business? And what does the phrase mean to you?
What does what mean?
What, how do you define pro-business? And what does that phrase mean to you? And we start with Laura Nakamura.
Thank you. To me, pro-business means not ordering from Amazon. Orders on Amazon take tax money away from our local businesses. I think also in our city, we need, we need to be supporting our local businesses in shopping local, having, I appreciate the programs, the gift card programs that the city sponsors. But pro-business means investing in our businesses locally so that the whole city is, it's part of the resiliency plan of making sure that we are a stronger city.
Okay, thank you. And Tim McCallion.
Sure. Pro-business are a lot of things that we're doing constantly on the city council. It's things like Concord Eats, it's Concord Treats. It is going out into community and making sure businesses have what they need in order to support that brick and mortar business, that home-based business. It's being able to, during the pandemic, making sure we're standing up programs also for our small businesses and making business grants where it's appropriate. And we did that. It's also making sure that we understand that economic development drives everything else. Because if you don't have a viable business community, that is the engine that funds everything as well. So yes, it takes residents and tax, tax dollars, but it also takes tax dollars from those businesses. And so we need to make sure those continue to be viable because those are, that's also the employment base that allows people to be able to live, work and play here. And so being pro-business is making sure you're having a pulse on what's going on in our business community because it is a lifeline and a vital element to having a successful city.
Thank you. And Robert.
Yeah, pro-business is, you know, obviously it's supporting businesses in your local community, but it's also attracting good businesses. It's encouraging businesses to stay in your local community. It's engaging with commercial property owners to land great tenants that are going to serve Concord, bring in lots of revenue. I know the city of Dublin has a program where they partner with commercial property owners on long-term deferred maintenance cost sharing agreements in order to land really large revenue businesses. They have some Fortune 100 businesses that they have been able to attract and maintain that bring millions of dollars a year in revenue. They bring jobs to that city. We could be doing similar things. And I think if, you know, we find ways to support our local businesses, if we find ways to engage people to invest in Concord, bring more jobs to Concord, bring more growth to Concord and not burden our businesses. I don't believe in, in, you know, fining and overburdening businesses so they have a hard time surviving. I think they should be thriving here and we should be supporting them in every way we can.
Thank you. Patty? Okay.
Laura? Yes, thank you. I think there's three things that come to mind when that, that's mentioned. One is to support our existing businesses, and I do that a lot with the Chamber of Commerce in terms of the, the interactions we have between the city and the chamber in terms of supporting our existing community base. It's also about attracting businesses to Concord. And we do that with outreach as part of our economic development team through different venues that we go out to. And being as part of the Economic Development Alliance for the East Bay, I was able to also connect with a lot of businesses, some of them have located in Concord. And then the other thing is retention. We need to retain the businesses that come here and also let them expand. We do have outreach and been part of the outreach team to be involved in that and finding them either abilities to expand where they are at other locations. So those are the three things that that phrase means to me. And I will point out that our business base is actually the largest contributor to our city budget when you combine the property taxes and the retail sales taxes that come off of businesses. That is what drives a lot of the revenue into our budget stream.
Thank you. And Quinn?
Yeah, I suppose being pro-business means making sure, I mean, it feels like we're all kind of saying the same thing here, but making sure that it's enticing for people to open and operate businesses here. And when I say people, I mean all people. You know, making sure that we have a community that welcomes a wide array of, a wide array of businesses so that there's, you know, we have, that we're more of a destination because there's so many cool things in Concord. And then of course, that's the other part of it, is making sure that we are a community and that we're investing in our community and planning so that people actually go to those businesses and utilize those services that we're bringing in businesses that people want to take advantage of, not take, that did not come out right, that people want, the services that people want to utilize and stores that people want to shop at, things of that nature.
Great, thank you. And in that, in the same line of thinking there, in order for Concord to continue to thrive, we need to attract new businesses and we need to keep the ones we have. What will you do to attract more business with high-paying jobs, bring quality jobs into the community? What, what steps specifically, if you can, will you support or will you take along to encourage new business? Oh, you're waiting for me. Laura Hoffmeister.
Thank you. There are several things. We've been doing things already. Like I said, we go out to venues and events and trade shows and talk to the businesses, find out what they're looking for in terms of what do they need, whether it's for their employees or for the company itself, to make sure we are having the right components that meets their needs. The main things to do to attract a business is make sure you have a good vibrant community. Coming out of the pandemic, obviously everything was buttoned down, nobody was expanding. But I think now we're geared up to try to go back out and see how we can attract businesses back into our community. We are the only city in the Bay Area that has two BART stations in it. So as far as public access goes for commuters or those trying to get to jobs, we have that benefit. Now unfortunately, because of the pandemic, people aren't taking BART as much. But if you look down at the future, we have public transportation available to meet the business challenge needs. I think we have the land and the property available, not the base, but also in North Concord and other areas of our community. And again, being by a BART station, that's encouraging because the businesses are looking for access for their employees.
Great, thank you. Quinn?
Yeah, I think developing some incentives to draw people to open their businesses in Concord. There's an art program that's, that just happened where they were painting the boxes, like they brought in artists to paint the power boxes, telephone, I can't remember what kind of utility it is. But, you know, these sorts of little things actually have an effect because that's the kind of stuff that gets marketed and people hear about that. And then, you know, we start to, start to develop a new, a new reputation with people as like a kind of a cool, progressive, you know, fun place to be. So I think that's part of making people want to come do business here. But I also think that, that we're missing an opportunity to bring in more tech jobs. Honestly, as somebody who used to have to commute to this, to, you know, to the peninsula every day, there are so many people in the East Bay who are qualified, who are smart, who are ready to rock and roll in the tech industry. And they all commute to San Francisco, San Jose and the peninsula.
Great, thank you. And Patty? Okay, Laura Nakamura.
Great, thank you. One of the things that I think I would do to bring in business is to try to ramp up our culture with the arts. In 2012, the Willows Theater went under. And we are, we are the biggest city in the county and one of the only cities in the county that doesn't have a theater, a theater arts program, performing arts program. And I think that that would really boost a lot of the, the businesses in the area by bringing people in from outside of Concord. The other thing that I would do is partner with Monument Impact, where they've, they've got a business development program and trying to get more businesses up and running. There are a lot of people who want to be doing their own businesses in Concord, people who live here. And that would make it possible for them to live, work and play in Concord. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Tim?
Sure. So as it relates to business attraction and business development, that's something that I've taken a very, I have taken a very, very active role over the last six years on the city council. One of the things though, that, that was something that we did see of concern was actually making sure that we went in, we enhanced the economic development team. Because that group is the group that's going out, they're making those contacts, they're going to the business fairs. And even in partnership with Visit Concord, I'll give them some credit, and the Concord Chamber of Commerce. That development team really has helped from a retention standpoint, has helped pop kind of the vibrancy of what we've got going. And I think it's put Concord on the right track of really telling our story. But then it's taking it a step further. It's partnering and being able to put on things like job fairs that we did this last year. It's being able to look at business incentives. It's also being able to help businesses with permitting. So being, you know, things like look what's happening in North Concord, being able to get structures to come out of the ground, be able to locate businesses here in Concord and do it in an expeditious manner because we have the resources, we need to just help people make it come to fruition.
Thank you. And finally, Robert.
Thank you. Yeah, I think when you look at, you know, bringing businesses to Concord, you want a variety of businesses, right? You want small mom and pop shops and you want to support these people, you want big tech jobs. You know, you want, you don't want to be a Mecca, Mecca tech center like Silicon Valley where nobody can afford to live there because all the jobs are, you know, paid by Apple and Google and everybody's getting paid a quarter million dollars a year. But there's things that you can do to attract great businesses into your town. And there's things that you can do to keep the attrition rate low, help them not leave. You know, we just had Bank of America leave. That's really terrible. We could be going to these businesses, we could be going to the commercial property owners and saying, you know, what do you need to do to attract the right businesses? We could be going to, to commercial leasing agents like Cushman and Wakefield and say, hey, look at your client base. We want some great businesses here in Concord and we're willing to partner with the property owners to give you guys what you need. Do you want long-term guarantees on cost sharing for deferred maintenance? This is a big one. I'm telling you, this is a really, really, really big one. We could be doing strategic and clever things like this that attract great businesses here, bring great jobs and have a low attrition rate that would improve Concord. I think that's, yeah.
Okay, thank you. The growing impact of internet sales, Amazon and just buying things online and the impact in COVID-19, the pandemic have severely impacted our small brick and mortar businesses. What can you do? What can you do? What, what will you do to support and to encourage the survival of our local small And we start with Patty.
Pass.
Okay. And Robert?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question again, please?
Sure. The, the growing impact of internet sales and of the COVID-19 pandemic have severely impacted our small brick-and-mortar businesses. What will you, specifically, what will your efforts be to support these businesses and to encourage their survival?
That's a great question. I think that we can do a number of things. You know, we do have certain things like music in the parks. We have a lot of local businesses come out. We have our farmer's market, which is lovely. You know, I'm open to policies that support local businesses. At the end of the day, it's, you can't dictate where people shop and you can't tell them to shop locally, but I think it starts by leading by example. You know, I shop locally, I eat locally. I have a podcast where we go and meet with business owners, interview them, highlight what they sell. Oftentimes, it's at breweries, and we talk about a lot of things related to the market and the things in the local economy. So, you know, it's a great question. I have an open door to ideas on these things. One of the things I, one of the ways I think you grow and bring progress to a city is you listen to smart and clever people and you seek out subject matter experts. There's a lot of people who have thought of something before you have and have a great idea on it that you could listen to and apply to your city and see progress come.
Okay. And Quinn?
Yeah, that is a tricky one. I think, well, Laura touched on this just a little bit ago. We were talking about this at the city council meeting last night. We have to go out of town to go catch a play or watch a musical or listen to the orchestra. And I think bringing, helping to invest in a broader cultural scene in Concord would give people, make us more of a destination, I think. And then people spend hours here, not just moments, and spend their money with us. So I think that's something I would encourage. I also, you know, the fact that the city council is allocating ARPA funds to small businesses here and in fact, working with Monument Impact to help, to help those businesses, that's great. Those are one-time funds. Maybe that's something we need to look at, making sure we are covering reserves for when things happen again, for that, for, you know, backup plans for that as well.
Okay, thank you. And Laura?
Yes, thank you. I think there's a few things that can be done, and we've been doing them, and now that we're out of COVID, we'll be pushing forward some more on this, is marketing. You need to be able to market your businesses and your community, the Shop Concord program, the gift cards, some of those things. We saw exponential use of that over COVID time periods and going forward. And the other thing we need to look at is the makeup of some of our small businesses. And I know the chamber's established now a Hispanic component into the Chamber of Commerce so that those groups can come together and try to help market and get involved in terms of improving business to their, their shops and stores. But we also have other community segments that are also in other ethnic groups, Middle Eastern and others, that I think can also benefit from some of that same partnership. The Jazz Festival that we partnership with got people out to other locations and small businesses in our community. So those types of things where we have that cross-marketing approach, where we can actually do events and activities, not just at Total Santos, but some other areas around Concord, to bring people into those areas to see those small businesses.
Thank you. And Tim?
Sure, thank you. So I think it really just comes down to really working on shopping local, but it comes down to also things that we have been doing actively. And I can't stress this enough. We helped to develop the Concord Forward Plan, and that was something that, again, through the pandemic, was not, was not an easy thing to do in terms of making sure we're actively reaching out to all of our members, all of our business owners and finding out what do you need and in what capacity can we serve you. It really does come down to relationships, and it really, I mean, the, the biggest thing, and I cannot stress this enough, is during mayor, during, during the pandemic, was actively meeting with the Chamber of Visit Concord Economic Development Team almost daily, weekly, to be able to make sure we're reaching out and helping people survive what we're all going through. But then it comes into that development effort of working on special events, music in the market, working with the TSBA, helping to develop all those elements that really build that there, there, here in Concord so that we have the ability to really show why people need to shop local.
Thank you. And Laura Nakamura?
Can you restate the question?
Sure.
Tamara?
The growing, yeah, we're still back on the, the growing impact of the pandemic and internet sales have really hit the small brick-and-mortar businesses hard, disproportionately hard. What are your plans and what will you do to support the survival and to support those businesses and the growth?
Great, thank you for repeating that. One of the things I personally do is I don't, I don't order from Amazon. I think that to encourage through programs in the city and, actually, I do know what I would do, that in 2018, I went through the Concord Community Institute. I think that bringing that back, bringing that back alive so that more and more residents can participate in that program, that was a program that really instilled in me just this love for my city and why all the inner workings of, of our government and how important it is for economic development in our own city. And it was at that point, I'm like, wow, I will never buy a car outside of Concord. This is one of those, it, it really helps, it's like a public relations effort, and our businesses need our support. They need community support from individuals as well as from government.
Great, thank you. Okay. Cannabis. What are your feelings and what are, what is your position on cannabis sales and the cannabis industry in Concord? It's, it's a growing industry. We've, the city has recently approved three businesses downtown cannabis-related. What, what are your views on that? Oh, you guys are supposed to read my mind or no? Okay, Robert?
Sure. I don't have a problem with the sale of cannabis. I think that, you know, a lot of people do it. My, my own grandmother did it when she was battling cancer, you know, it's like, and this is back when it was stigmatized and illegal and this whole thing. And it's like, kind of a joke when you look at certain states and it's illegal. And I thought for a long time, you know, Concord was kind of behind on getting to the storefronts for this sort of service. You know, it shouldn't be stigmatized. A lot of people use it for, you know, not just having fun, but for sleeping and if used in a responsible way and if we're managing the development of it and how it's, you know, how and where it's sold and we're benefiting from the tax dollars, it's fine. Shouldn't be a big bone of contention.
Okay. Laura Nakamura?
Thank you. I, I think that the city's going in a good direction with regards to our cannabis businesses. I think that we are proceeding carefully. I would like to see requirements for minimum, not a minimum, not a minimum wage, because we have that at, I think it's like 15. But the MIT calculator for a living wage puts Concord and Contra Costa County at $24 an hour. And so I'd like to see us require that.
I, I'm sorry, puts Concord at what? The county, what?
$24 an hour as a starting wage.
So you would like to see?
Right.
Okay. Okay, got it. And Quinn?
I, I mean, cannabis is legal in California. I mean, we have liquor stores, we have grocery stores, you can, I mean, everything that's legal, I don't, I don't have any concerns about that. Yes, there is a, some, I think, some vestiges of the past where there's some stigma around it, but like Robert said, my mom relies on tablets to go to sleep. She's 75 years old, and that is the only thing that helps her get a good night's sleep through the night. You know, there's regulations and laws about it, and you have to be a certain age to enter. It's not like, you know, drug dealers on the corner. It's, let's, you know, proceed with caution and, you know, collect the tax dollars from businesses who, who operate here.
Okay, Tim?
So I think the development of the cannabis policy in Concord was something that I really tried to take a very active role in because we needed to get it right. And so I think the idea of even remotely saying that we were behind is ridiculous because I think we were trying to develop our policies, the state was trying to get their policy in order as well, and as all local governments were trying to figure this out and make sure that it was being done properly. I think that that we rolled out was something the community was being able to accept in terms of the in and out of storefronts, micros, I mean, we've got Coastal, Stizzy, and Culture, all in the process of, one's been open, two more getting open, Fiakra, Cocoa Farms, Procan, and MedUSA. Again, all in the process of opening, good jobs, union-paying jobs. The big thing, though, on this is that if we are trying to disrupt the illicit market, this is how we do it. We do it legally, we make sure we bring them in properly, and at this point, we have an ability to regulate this, but there are also implications that help us from a budgetary standpoint, too. The city will realize those revenues and will help us be able to fill a number of budget gaps that we need to be able to use those dollars for.
Great, thank you. Patty?
Pass.
And Laura Hoffmeister?
Yes, and let me just follow up from Tim. You know, our policy that we took some time to develop was looking at a balance, and you asked what our, you know, how do we approach policy? And it was a balance of listening to the community concerns and what the business needs were and finding locations in our community that would be appropriate, not impacting to the community, and be as successful locations for the businesses that chose to locate there. We have seen that they've opened, and some of them are already, you know, creating sales tax revenue for the city. And then we're also looking at the capability of some of the others up and running in terms of their community benefits. That was one of the things we were able to derive out of these agreements, was putting in together a policy where there would be community benefits that businesses would have to offer up in order to locate in our community, and I think that was a real positive aspect. In terms of cannabis, we've taken a, I think, a moderate approach as we've gone forward. And, you know, there's more than just drops, there's also rubs and lotions that people use for a variety of arthritic pains or other pain relief. So there is a benefit to that in our community.
Thank you, ma'am. That's it? Okay. And the next question. The police budget in Concord is 57% of the total operating budget. Where should the city be concentrating its efforts in the public safety area? And would you change that allocation, that allocation, the 57%? Would you increase or decrease it? But where should the city be focusing its efforts? And we'll start with Robert.
Sure. So, you know, I'm proud to say that I'm the only candidate running in District One that has the endorsement of the Concord Police Officers Association as well as the Deputy District Attorneys Association. I believe that public safety is incredibly important. If you don't have safety in your city, you know, I would kind of argue you don't have a city. People don't want to live here, they don't want to stay here, businesses don't want to come here. And so I don't see the point of having a police department that you underfund. It's just, you know, crime is rising, people are frustrated with it. And I've been attacked for this, right? But I'm not going to back down. I'm not ashamed of the fact that I'm, support our men and women in blue. And we've got some strange things going on in the city in regards to the finances around that. Like, our police department is the only one in Contra Costa County that I'm aware of that we require our police to pay into two forms of retirement, social security and CalPERS, which means they have less take-home pay. We have a lower starting wage than some of the surrounding cities. So we have a, we have a high attrition rate now. Currently, we have a 20% vacancy in the police force when you look at staffing issues and officers out on injury. You know, we're down in the 120s right now. We were all the way at 170, you know, a few years ago. We've got to make changes here.
Thank you, Robert. Laura Nakamura?
So what I think is needed is a more data and dialogue and a real willingness to listen and learn from each other and a willingness to be open and transparent and accountable. We do not have enough data, I believe, to make a decision about reallocation of police funding. I do not think that we are overfunding or underfunding our police. I'm sorry, I do not believe that we are underfunding them, but that's a, that's, we still need more data. The question of changing the allocation of the police budget is unanswerable without more information, and I am not going to commit to that tonight. But I do believe that we need a healthy partnership with our law enforcement and all of the stakeholders, and I, I support the creation of a, an advisory board to the police to start that process of having better engagement with our police. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Quinn?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have immediate plans to raise or lower that budget. I'd want to look at it in detail first and understand where those monies are being spent. I mean, to Laura's point, data was actually a question that came up again in last night's city council meeting. There was a presentation from the, the police about their drone program, and, you know, there was some concern expressed from the public about a dearth of data around usage of that and funding of that and, you know, where, how it's, how, how those drones are being used and, and how successfully. So, and then I think the core program has only recently been fully funded, and so we may not really have seen the effects of being able to transition some more health, mental health response, resolution away from the police department, which is something they've traditionally also been responsible for, but maybe taking some of that off their plate, they can spend more time focused on actual criminal behavior.
Okay, thank you. Tim?
Sure. I think within trying to work through our, our police budget, it's going to be very challenging for us over the coming year. And I think the reason why, and a lot of people, I don't think fully understand this, is that our staffing levels are at an all-time low, and that's something that is going to be a concern, and people know this. It's difficult to be able to not only attract, but it's difficult to retain police officers. Now, we've taken a number of steps to be able to work on some of the different step-ups as, as things come in, but being able to retain those officers between that three-to-five-year time period is difficult. We have a vacancy rate right now of 11%. We're down a minimum of 14 officers, but that's not including the people that are out on leave, injured reserve. So I think the issue is, yes, we need to hire, we're going to need to find tools that work as force multipliers, and be able to figure out how we can solve this budget problem within the means of total revenues as well. But it really is going to come down to making sure that we are putting the right amount of money into our, our police budget so that we can have a viable operation and organization within the city of Concord.
Thank you, Tim. Patty?
Pass.
And Laura Hoffmeister?
Yes, you'd asked about the, the police, public safety and the budget being 57%. 57% I think is a right number for right now. As we go forward, we'll need to see, you know, whether that number needs to go up. We do have labor negotiations that will be coming up. We've all seen what inflation is doing. We know that all of our employees in our organization are going to be looking for higher wages. So where that percentage goes in the future, it's likely to go up as more salary increases and benefit increases happen, which is fine. Somewhere along the line, we'll have a fair and reasonable salary structure as we move forward in labor negotiations that's competitive with the area. As was mentioned, our police department is down 10%, 11%. Martinez is down 24%. Richmond's 23%. Walla Creeks is down 12%. This is not a phenomenon unique to Concord. There's a lack of police officers going into the profession. We're all competing for a very small, finite amount of officers. So how we address that as we go forward in terms of doing some things already is giving incentives for hiring, some bonuses, and the starting pay, actually, a lot of the public doesn't understand, but officers have specialty pay.
Thanks, Laura.
So they do have a higher starting pay than what you might just see.
Thank you. Businesses, along with everybody else, but certainly businesses in our area, have been impacted by several hundred unsheltered persons living on the streets and in the open areas in Concord. Businesses have relocated, they've left the city, or they're threatening to leave the city because of public health and safety issues. How do you propose the city of Concord address the problems created by an unsheltered population? In one minute. And who starts?
Who starts?
Who starts? Patty?
No comment.
Pass, okay. And Robert?
Yeah, thank you for the question. As I mentioned, I'm unfortunately very familiar with the homeless issue for multiple reasons, but one of which I had a family member who was homeless. You know, I think when we look at a few things, but when we look at the, the amount of people that are on the streets that deal with one of the following three issues, severe mental illness, this is a really big challenge, substance abuse, and alcohol addiction. If you look at the recent report that came out by Contra Costa County, this affects a lot of people, and they even had to have a disclaimer at the bottom saying, yeah, if you add all these things up, they equal over 100% because there's so many overlapping issues there, and the rate is so far above, you know, what unhoused is, you know. As far as people who don't fall into those categories, I mean, look, we live in a first-world country. Nobody should be so far below the poverty line that they can't get into housing. I think that's where core really comes in, and Concord's done a good job on that. I don't think that the onus is entirely on Concord to solve this problem. I think we do need to work with our partners in Sacramento and at the county, you know, for resource allocation, for, for laws, frankly, to be able to help serve these people, get them the tools and resources they need to get in a better position.
Okay, thank you. And Laura Nakamura?
We need more resources. We don't have enough wraparound resources to help those who do want it, the people who are sleeping on our streets every night. I, I, I do feel for the businesses in our community. We, we also don't have a, generally a centralized location where people can seek help if they need it or services. And that's what I, I think that we should be moving in that direction of. Right now, you know, you can point to the shelter that's off, down off, on the other side of Highway Four. It's very dangerous to get there, it's not close to anything. So if I were someone who got kicked out every morning from my bed and had to go find a place to be, that's not the place that, that's not where I would be. We need to be, I, I think that the strategic plan that we're doing, the homeless strategic plan that we are entering into, even though it is one year away from completion of, of any plan, it's still, right now, I think it's going to set us up to be tackling this challenge.
Okay, thank you. You know, one minute is not nearly enough time to address the unsheltered. I agree. Quinn?
Yeah, I think if anybody here had the solution to making sure our unhoused were well taken care of, I think we'd all be very pleased about that. I think one of the things that we need to do is focus on preventative measures. Look at some of the drivers for homelessness. As Robert mentioned, sometimes there is some mental illness or substance abuse involved. Sometimes, you know, we have maybe people who are getting evicted, so there's not maybe enough rent stabilization or affordable housing availability, and so people aren't able to secure and stay secure in their housing and end up on the streets. But 25% of our homeless population do carry full-time jobs. They're, I mean, they want to do better, they want to be in a better position, and they just need some help. So I think resources, both for the prevention pieces, and maybe try a little, something a little more aggressive with resolving the issues. Again, while we're at time, sorry.
Okay, and Laura Hoffmeister?
Yes, first off, the Boise decision that was made was a federal court case. Any case, it, it really impacted all cities' ability to address homelessness. Basically said that if you can, you can be in a public space, as long as you're not blocking the sidewalk and be homeless, and you don't have to move, even if you have a mental health issue, we have resources for you, you can say no and stay there. And that's been a problem. Prop 47 also decriminalized a lot of issues and also limited the court's ability to help, as Robert was saying, have those that were mental substance abuse, alcohol abuse, get into programs to get treatment. And that is no longer allowed. So we have a problem, it's not just in Concord, it's nationwide. Some of the things we're doing is we have $5.4 million set aside that we are moving forward with, with the community service manager, and was mentioned the strategic plan to address homelessness in a comprehensive manner, because it's not just housing, but it supports services that are also needed in order to be successful in the outcomes on this.
Okay. Tim?
So, like you said, there's been so many issues, so many ways we've been trying to come at this issue. But I think the biggest issue right now is that over the last few years, we've, we've tried to kind of be focused on a strategic and very systematic approach to how we're going to try to not solve it, but at least try to work with partners to make it better. And so that's something that I think has been really important collectively as a council, but we're working towards making sure it's not just our Concord PD. We've fully funded a full-time core team, added a social work position to it, we have a mental health evaluation team, we've hired a community services manager in that role, we've worked with rapid, rapid rehousing program with Hope Solutions to support the core team, social worker. But the goal, too, is continue to working with our religious and nonprofit community and work with the county. Because again, we're not funded to necessarily take on all these solutions, but it ends up being in our lap to be able to come up with somehow the solution and figure out to come up with dollars that actually aren't allocated. So we're having to take those from other places and be very, very creative with dollars that are not allocated to us.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. There are currently a number of prime properties in the downtown area that are undeveloped. Do you support a tax or a fine on empty storefronts or vacant parcels? And we'll start with Quinn.
That's a tricky one, too. Why don't you toss us any softballs?
I'm sorry, why?
Why don't you throw us any softballs?
[laughing]
Big leagues, yeah.
I, I, I think there's probably some nuance to this. It depends why these spaces are empty. Are they being held empty intentionally, or is there something else happening? You know, there's a lot of other cities in other places that do have a fine. It's a, I mean, San Francisco included, but there's a fine. If you leave your building or a space intentionally vacant or unintentionally vacant, you have to register it and pay a, an annual fee for that, and that goes to the city. So it's a disincentive to keep, to keep the space empty if that's the intention behind it. If there's other things besides landlords just wait, you know, waiting for the best tenant to, to sign a lease, then, you know, then we need to look at what those things are. I don't know what those would be offhand, but...
So do you support that tax that you were referring to in San Francisco?
It's hard for me to commit to that without having a look at...
Without a case by state.
Yeah, without having a little bit more information about what the situation is.
So honestly, tax doesn't work. It's not gonna, it's not, you can't force somebody to do it, and technically, the tax is a write-off. So all you did is just give a landlord another write-off. They don't have to, they don't have to put anybody in that space, because what most people don't understand is that they need to be able to show that they can rent it for that amount, and as long as they can rent it for that amount, they don't have to. And that makes the valuation of the building what it, what they need it to be for their books. So that's kind of the misnomer a lot of people don't always understand. But the other side of this is that we've looked at this, and that would be wasting a lot of time. We've been very fortunate at this moment. We've worked very hard the last few years to be able to make sure a lot of those vacant lots now have entitlements on them. We're going to start seeing stuff come out of the ground. It comes back to business development, and it's being able to take a real hard approach, working with businesses, giving them incentives, giving them the tools they need, and the permitting help all the way along the line to be able to make businesses thrive in a manner that works without having to tax them for something that's not going to be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Laura Hoffmeister?
Thank you. I don't know about the undeveloped lots downtown, but if it's ones I'm thinking of, we've got close to, well, we have 1,237 units that have been approved downtown. So projects are approved, they're not seeing them built yet, we had COVID hit, we've now got problems with material supplies, construction labor shortage, so a lot of these are not yet coming out of the ground as we recover from COVID. You've seen some activity, we're really excited about it, that we, because we have about 400 units that are under construction now. As far as the retail vacancies, there's not that many downtown, but the ones that we do have, there's always a story behind the story as to why those are there. There are the nuances, there are the hard ones, it's a landlord that doesn't want to get a tenant in there, a tenant tax does not work, or vacant parcel taxes, Tim McGallion said, it's a write-off for a business. It's just another expense that they get an offset to their profit statement. So that, as far as they're concerned, bring it on, I can still keep it vacant, and guess what, you lowered my state tax liability, so I can pay less money to the state.
Okay, thank you. Robert?
Yeah, I mean, you've got to spend money to write it off, so it's not exactly a one-for-one, you know, savings, but I understand what they're saying. I'm not in favor of a tax on businesses or commercial properties to not get people in the storefronts. I think it's an insult to commercial property owners to go say, we're going to punish you because you're suffering. I mean, come on, we need to help them attract businesses and get people in the doors. Why would we copy a policy like this to, to punish and disincentivize people? That, what does that say to other people that want to come in and invest and buy properties and buy lots, maybe develop those? They go, oh, if I can't get it off the ground, if I can't find a developer, if I can't find a tenant, what's Concord going to do? Oh, they're going to tax me, you know? And then they get the, the write-off, which, again, they had to spend money for to get. So, no, not in favor, don't think we should do it.
Okay. And Laura Nakamura?
Yeah, this is a quality of life issue for Concord. Instead of increasing the burdens on the owners of the vacant properties, I think that the government should be eliminating barriers and, and I think we should be considering rezoning for multiple uses for that retail space to give them more options to put more businesses, different types of businesses in. There's a couple storefronts in, in District Five that I can think of that might be great for, to have like a taproom, but, but they were zoned for sales of craft supplies or paint, and that, we just need to, I'm sorry, it always throws me off. I just think that we might need to look at the zoning and see if vacant properties can fit into a wider array of uses to make them more profitable for the owners and also more vibrant for the community. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. And Patty? Pass? Okay. Thanks for sticking it out, though. Okay, you wanted a softball question.
What's your name?
The city has signed an exclusive negotiating agreement for the development of the Concord Naval Weapons Station with Concord First Partners. As a council member, what direction should the city take in moving forward with the base reuse? Laura Nakamura?
This is an easy one for me. I would not have gone into an agreement with this particular developer. And right now, that developer is telling us, the CNO Group, Concord First Partners, is telling us it doesn't pencil out, and I think we should take them at their word and close the process and start looking for another developer. Thank you.
Thank you. And Quinn?
Yes, I realize they're a sponsor of this event, but I have to agree with Laura Nakamura. I, I think we should not have given them an extension. If they couldn't make it work, then they can't make it work, and we should... I know that after speaking with the other Laura, that I know there's been a long process of looking for other developers, and it's not an easy, it's not like you just say, come on in and you got the perfect developer. I know it's a difficult endeavor, but I think that, that we're off to a little bit of a bad start here.
You think we should start again, is what you said?
Yeah, I think, I think it may be time. If they can't do it for the, the amount we discussed and the terms that we, that were agreed upon and are trying to change the deal now, I mean, where does it go from there?
Patty? Comment? Okay, Robert?
Yeah, it's one of the reasons I'm running for city council. We have to get the Concord Naval Weapons Station off the ground. It's going to add a lot of revenue, it's going to add a lot of much-needed housing to the City of Concord and businesses as well. We need to move it forward. Look, an updated term sheet has not been written since 2005. Over 16,000 environmental laws have been passed in the state of California alone since that time began. The last time we were, you know, fumbling around with a developer for years and years and years, they said they were going to make an agreement with project labor, with unions, and they didn't. And they basically gave, you know, the finger to unions. So, you know, the Concord First that was chosen, in large part, I think, I can't speak for other council members, was probably because they made a wall-to-wall agreement with labor. And it's really important that when this gets developed, it gets developed responsibly. And I think the way that we ensure that occurs is we make sure that there's good local, you know, union and skilled and trained labor on these jobs. And so we need to look, it's a very complex issue. You know, you've got to work with 23 government agencies to get this thing off the ground. And we ask them to drill it down into one paragraph so we can vote on it. I think we need to work with them, overcome challenging problems, and deliver this for the people of Concord.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
Well, this is, as I said before, I was here when we did the base closure. This is not a sprint, it's a marathon. We have an E&amp;A process that we're working on now with the current Concord First Partners. We had a process before with Lennar, they chose to leave before we got to a particular point in the process. We went out and did a nationwide search. We had 17 development companies approximately interested. At the end of the day, we had three development teams that submitted. This was a nationwide search. When people say, let's stop and go back out, tell me who. Tell me which company wants to come in and take on this project. That, that's a challenge. I don't know of one. I did not support the Concord First Partners in the first go-round. I had supported another master developer. I lost that vote. My role now is to ensure we get the best deal for our community, that the community benefits are kept as we go forward. We don't even have a term sheet before us. It took Lennar a lot longer than these guys are taking to do a term sheet. So if we were to say no, we would have been sued if we didn't give them an extension. So again, I go back to the legal points, is what do I look at when I develop policy or make decisions? And that was one of them.
Thank you. And Tim?
All right, thank you. I basically will just tag on what the vice mayor said specifically, and I think it's very clear that there is a lot to this process, and it is not something that is just a very clean, simple, cut-and-dry process. We are moving to the next step, to the term sheet. Come January, we'll be looking at that term sheet. And I know that everybody wants to be able to kind of go backwards and say, oh, that, you know, that got written, that it's not going to pencil out. Well, guess what? It's actually being written now that it's going to be penciling out, and now we have to see what those terms look like. And the goal is to continue to hold the, the developer accountable. Does it have that that we expect? Does it have the open space, the affordable housing component? Does it have the local labor? Is it incorporating the things that we come to expect with what this world-class project is going to look like? And if it meets all of those criteria, then it's time to move forward. And so no matter what you think about it, at this point, we are legally in a contract to move forward with a group that we are going to work in partnership, and we also get the ability to dictate how this is supposed to look, feel, and get developed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have some audience questions here, because we're out of ours. Okay, what, I don't, okay, that's the order? Okay, perfect. What is your stance on term limits for city council members? For example, is there a maximum of two terms, three? Do you favor term limits for city council members? And we'll start with Tim.
You know what? I actually don't really have a position on this at this point.
You have no position?
I really don't. I think that it's something that I think some cities have it, some cities don't. I think at this point, we don't have term limits, and I think that's worked its way out pretty well so far, because I think if you look traditionally, over the last 50, 100 years, I really don't think that it's really become something that's been of issue in terms of kind of the lifecycle of a city council member in the City of Concord. So, yeah, like I said, it's not something that I think is of concern right now.
Thank you. Patty? No comment? Laura Nakamura?
Term limits are considered elections.
I'm sorry, why?
Elections are considered term limits, and so that's, that's where I stand right now with that.
Okay. Laura Hoffmeister?
Oops, I forgot, my mic's already on. I concur. Every four years is an election, so people stand for election. I think what you've seen in our community and other communities where you, you have, we have a council member who just got elected four years ago. So we have somebody very new, and we have myself, who's been on a longer amount of time, and we've got people in between. So I think that's a good blend on a city council, is to have a variety of people who have served. Having people all come in all at one time often becomes a little bit cumbersome and difficult for staff in the community and getting people up to speed. So I think having a variety of people in terms of their term of service in the community is great, and every four years, the public gets to decide what they want.
Robert? Great, thank you. Quinn?
Yeah, I don't think there's any issue. You know, there's five people on city council, people get to vote for who they want. I think the problem really is more about the process, and I think this is one of the reasons I'm running for city council, is I think our political machine at every level of government is broken. The fact that it costs so much money to have a proper campaign. The person often with the most resources, whether it's time, human resources, or money, is usually the person who wins. Who gets the funds? Who can spend the money? Who can get out there? Who has the flexibility to attend all of the events like this one, or the ones that, you know, the interview at 10:00 AM, or this and that and the other? You know, I realize I'm in a position of privilege as are the other people up here, where we have flexibility in our day jobs to do that, but not everybody does. And I think that's exclusionary, and I think that a lot of people who could run for city council aren't because they can't, they don't have those resources. Like, Dominic is not here because he's running on a post. He doesn't need to be here.
Okay. And Robert?
So my opponent's been on for six terms, so I think that's a good limit. I'm, it's obviously a joke, right? But, I mean, I, I...
I like you.
Thank you, Laura, I like you too. I, I, I think, yeah, I mean, you know, when, you know, if you go back to like our, you I think, yeah, I mean, if you go back to like the founding of the country, right? The idea that you run for office is you do your civic duty. You serve your community, and you take a break from what you do for a living, or you'd maybe do it in partnership, and you go and you run for office, and you serve for a time, and then you stop. I think everybody's frustrated with career politicians, you know, all the way up to the national level. You look at some of these people, and you go, "God, are you ever going to retire?" You know, and you kind of go... Sometimes you're thankful for their service, and sometimes you want a fresh face to lead, you know, you into the future, and that's one of the reasons that I'm running.
Okay, thank you. And a corollary question to this. Should... Right now, the mayor is elected by the rest of the city council. Typically, there's a traditional rotation, but that's not cast in stone. Should, in your opinion, should the mayor be elected by all the citizens of Concord versus rotating my district? And we'll start with Patty? No comment? And so we'll go to Laura Nakamura.
I think that we'd have to look at whether it's time for us to switch over to a general law city. I don't have a strong opinion on this, but I don't think that we're ready for that.
Okay. Laura?
Sure. I don't think Concord's in a position at this time or in the near future, I think, for a directly elected mayor. The cities that I've seen that have had directly elected mayors have a lot of contention and a lot of problems in Contra Costa and elsewhere. The larger cities, when you talk about Oakland, San Francisco, Berkeley, it's a different form of government. As mentioned, general law. General law now, if you were to become a general law city, you don't have a lot of the same flexibilities and provisions that you used to under the old way, because the state has gotten very used to saying, any law that they pass or any rules that they do, it also applies to general law cities. So it's not the flexibility that used to be there, and a lot of times, the mayor has powers beyond those of the city council, can hire and fire staff, can hire and fire a police chief, and make those recommendations. And I think having the way we have it set up, especially with districts, it gives everybody a chance to rotate and be in that leadership role. And you talk about the time spent for election, that's nothing compared to being on the city council and all of the commitments that you have to make, and especially as mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. And did we get everybody? No? Robert? You answered. Did we get everybody on that question?
I have not answered the question, and I would like to.
Okay.
Thank you. You know, I think it's an interesting thing. If elected, I would love to serve as mayor, and they kind of make it easy for you if you get elected to the city council, because you kind of get rotated in, right? But ultimately, it should be up to the people. I mean, like, we live in a democratic republic where we vote on things, so we should ask the people of Concord how they feel about it. I have posed this question to a lot of people, a lot of people that we think that we should have, you know, a directly elected mayor. Now, that being said, I think there's benefits to having a rotating mayorship, because one of the things that you get, which is really nice, is you get a variety of representations, right? So if you get somebody like Mayor Dominic Aliano, his district has different interests and needs than maybe like my district does, and maybe, you know, Councilmember McGallion. So that is nice that you get this spotlight. You know, one of the challenges that you'll see, and one of the things that'll come up, is if you have a directly elected mayor, you'll see that the special interests and lobbyists with the most amount of money will get behind the person that they want, and you could have in perpetuity one main interest represented, which, depending on who you ask, could be a good or a bad thing. But ultimately, I think it should be put to a vote, and the public should be educated on it, and they should decide.
Okay, thank you. And then I think Tim?
Yeah, I think this has come up, I think, every single year I've been on the city council, and even many, many years before this, I think it comes up every single year. And I will also say that I think it's the most confusing thing in Concord, you know, that most people don't understand, that the mayor is not directly elected. But the biggest piece of it is, I think that... I think most of my colleagues up here have alluded to that it allows for a change of kind of opinions. As you become mayor, it does allow for kind of different approaches. And the other nice part about it is there's five directly elected individuals. Not one person has more power than the other, and so it takes three people to be able to pass legislation. It's not just the mayor, and then, you know, everybody else just kind of follows in suit. So I think that allows for a nice balance within the City of Concord. And then there are a lot of other issues that were mentioned in terms of, you know, is a city big enough to have a directly elected mayor? And then, you know, is it a full-time position? And what does that mean for staff? And so I think the way we have it now really allows for equal representation across all districts, the way we've done it.
Okay. Not exactly overwhelming support for that, is there? Okay.
May I?
Okay, you're next. We've mixed up the cards, so I've kind of lost track.
Did you answer that question? She didn't answer the question. You missed her.
You did not answer the district. Okay, please do.
No, ma'am. I interpreted this question differently. I thought the question was really about, not should we switch from a five-member city council to a directly elected mayor, but should we change the rotation election by other council members to that annual rotation decided by the public? So basically, I interpreted the question as, should we let the public choose from the five city council members each, which of them they want to be mayor?
Oh, directly elected mayor is the question.
Right, okay. So I think that the way we have it set up makes more sense for this city. We have very different districts, and I think in the rotating and staggering, I wouldn't change that. And even the way I interpreted the question, that would just add another election and cost Concord more money, taxpayer dollars, to do that twice. So no, I don't think... I think it makes sense the way it is.
We have time for like two more questions, and then we'll go to the wrap-up, to the closing statements. This one, I think, it's an audience question. I think it's interesting. What do you consider...
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you. Can you lean forward to the mic?
What?
Hello? We can't hear you.
Oh, I didn't think I was supposed to be right up on it. All right. What do you consider to be the most accessible and effective ways to obtain community input and engagement on policy issues? And how would... Let's just take the second part of this question. How would you engage a community, community members who don't speak English? Give some thoughts to that. I think just pare that question down. What... Just take the second half of that. How would you suggest engaging community members that did not speak English? And we'll start with Laura. Yeah, Hoffmeister.
Thank you. We both look. We do community outreach already with our Hispanic community, and if there's other groups that have language issues, you know, different languages, we have folks that can also facilitate, you know, whether it's a community workshop, those types of things. We have stuff bilingual on our website when we put out surveys and gather input. COVID was interesting, because we weren't able to do a lot of things in person to gather input on community issues, and we're looking forward to getting back to having more of that as one of the avenues, because it's not... Some people are more comfortable coming in person to an event and expressing their views and their concerns and getting information. Some are fine with online surveys, and some are more male people. So we have to do it in all ways to try to reach the community, because every person is a slightly different in terms of what they like to receive in terms of community input to us. And so community input and engagement is very important, especially as we go forward with the Naval Weapons Station, to gather all of that input as we go forward and see what comes out of this next steps. And having those translations available is going to be key.
Okay, thank you. Robert?
Yeah, it's a great question. So, look, I mean, this is a little bit of a brag, but I love languages. I speak four different languages at various proficiencies. Spanish and Portuguese are two of them. And I think that it's really important to engage with other members of the community that don't speak English. And so translation services, as far as community engagement goes, town halls, I think, are really important. If I were elected, I would hold a public town hall once a month, where I would invite people to come and listen and engage and talk about issues that are important to them. And I would love to bring in more people that are not just primary English speakers. You know, my wife is not a primary English speaker. And have translation services available and make it easy for people to make their voices heard. I think it's really important to have involvement from all your members of your community, and, you know, language should not be a barrier. We live in a beautifully diverse community, and we're proud of that.
All right, great, thank you. Tim?
Yeah, I think honestly, we've really had to work hard at setting up listening sessions, community engagement. I think that we do have the ability to have bilingual services, and also just partnerships with a number of the community groups has allowed us to be able to reach out. It's something that's very, very tricky, just because we want to make sure we have as much community engagement as possible from every sector of our entire community. And so it is. It's something that I know that we've been very... We've tried to be very, very mindful of on the current city council now, and we have actively tried to make language services available. And so it's something we'll just... We will be continuing to do.
Okay, thank you. I lost track. Laura Nakamura? Laura?
You're doing great, keeping us all on track here. I agree with everyone, what people have said here about what we're doing as a city. I also think that going out into the community, instead of, you know, the format of a town hall where you have people come to you, may not always work for everyone, and we have to be cognizant of different times when people are working. Not everyone has a nine-to-five job that we have to fit into that. We may have to rearrange and do things more on Saturdays or at different hours of the day. I think the Zoom format, the hybrid format that we have for our meetings is really important, and it's not only for people with different languages, but also accessibility. There are a lot of people who, being able to not have to drive on Tuesday nights to attend a city council meeting, they can attend and participate online, is really important. And so the inclusion part of it is something that I think we're doing a good job.
Great, thank you. Tim?
I've already answered it.
Yeah, you did already answer. Okay, Quinn?
Yeah, I think everything everybody said, I agree with that. I think the city is doing better about providing translation services at events. I think outreach is decent. I do, as a resident myself, I feel like the only time I'm ever asked what I want in Concord is at election time, though. So I feel like it's... The outreach isn't ever hitting me personally, and so I feel like there is probably still room for improvement. You know, there's 130,000 people that live in Concord. Reaching them all is very difficult, and everybody has different variability of how and when they can and want to be accessed, you know, whether it's through the mail, whether it's through email, you know, maybe billboards. I know this is very old school, but they're, I think, exploring and expanding our options to make sure the public knows what's going on, and that... I think there's probably plenty of residents that don't even know we have city council meetings and when they are or where they are and what time. And even if they did, they might not... Many people might not be able to or want to come to those specifically, expanding options.
Okay, great. And Patty? Pass? Okay. Okay, one last question, and then we'll go to the wrap-ups. Should you not be elected? How do you plan to stay engaged with the community? We'll start with Rob.
Well, it's a great question. I would look for, you know, boards to serve on. I would continue to stay engaged in the way that I have been with being a leader, both in the business and nonprofit sectors. I would advocate for vulnerable in our population, and I would work with elected officials, many of whom I've met with and already knew, ahead of running for elected office, on solving tough problems, you know? I think that the best way for me to lead in this community is to be elected to this position, and I can do that, you know, with your vote and with support from the people here in my district. But, you know, there are more ways than one to solve a problem, and city council and five votes don't solve everybody's issues, right? There's issues that impact all of us that require a lot of thought, and so I could be a thought leader, and I definitely will be involved and engaged on civic affairs.
Okay, thank you. And Tim?
Yeah, I think realistically, I'll continue to serve in a number of capacities that I already do, whether it be with the nonprofit organizations. Hey, you know what? I started with the Chamber, I will always continue to serve with the Chamber, and I'm very excited about the other entities and things that go around that. Continue to serve with the TSBA, and continue to help develop the downtown. And from a holistic approach of looking, everything that's going on in Concord, I'm still extremely proud of everything that we've been able to develop, and it's not something that I'll just continue to set aside. It's something I will continue to work with and be able to continue to develop, this city that I've spent almost an entire half of my life trying to build up and make this the most incredible place to live, work, and play.
Okay, thank you, Tim. And Laura Nakamura?
This is a great question. I have had so much engagement with voters, with residents in District 5, and when I first started this process of becoming a candidate and getting out there and knocking on doors, I... District 5 is an interesting area. There's... I feel it's kind of a hard nut to crack in some ways, that there's a lot... There's not a lot of engagement. My promise is that I am going to keep people engaged. I've got a newsletter. I'm going to continue to make sure people know what's going on in our city and that they know about meetings, and they know what's on the agenda. And I know that the city does a good job of making sure that the agendas are put out there and the messaging is good, but sometimes neighbors talking to neighbors really can make a difference, and I continue to plan to do that and also serve in ways of, you know, continue to do my advocacy work. I'm still on the Community Services Commission. I will get involved with the Bicycle Pedestrian and Advisory Committee as well.
Good, thank you. Quinn?
Well, if I actually made the $4 million salary, Robert, per ports, that I make working in the tech sector, I'd spend all my money in Concord. No, I'll continue to shop locally. I do think that some of the internet services are not great for Concord businesses, and I will continue to attend city council meetings, probably via Zoom. I love the Zoom. And volunteer in efforts that make sense for me to volunteer in. Like, I'm really interested in making sure that we're focusing on minority communities, BIPOC, women-owned businesses, LGBTQIA-friendly businesses, like these are the causes I'm interested in, as well as the arts and cultural growth here in Concord, so participating in those kinds of activities and events.
Great, thank you. And Patty?
I'd like to say that if I'm not elected, I will continue in my service organizations in the community. I've been a member of Kiwanis for 30 years. That won't change, and I'll just continue with all that.
Thank you. And then, pardon me, Laura?
Yes, I would, you know, continue and go back to some of the things that I was involved in prior to being elected, and be more active in the chamber. Visit Concord has been established, the Totas Santos Business Association, my work in AAUW, the Concord Historical Society, and, you know, the Friends of the Library and the Arts Alliance. Those are all areas that I've had connectivity with ongoingly and did a lot of work with before I got elected.
Great. And finally, we have one minute for closing statements. We don't have time to go back and, I don't think, revisit any of the other questions, so we'll get the closing statements and then our goodbyes. And I just want to say thank you to everybody. This is a tough format, but time is short and the issues are complex. Nothing is simple, and there really aren't any softball questions in these elections. So let's start with you. One minute for your closing statement. Actually, we have a little extra time. Why don't we go 90 seconds? We have... Can you change that? Okay, we have a little extra time. We'll go 90 seconds, a minute and a half, on your closing statements, so if there's something that you didn't address, take this opportunity now to do it. You ready? Set? Go. Closing statements, we start with Robert Ring.
Okay. Well, hey, again, I'm grateful to be here. You know, one thing I'd like to point out is that I've, you know, run an impressive campaign, and that's not without attacks, but I've got unwavering support from Assembly Member Tim Grayson, which I'm proud to have his support and endorsement. There's a reason he endorsed me. I've got support from the Concord Police Officers Association. I see somebody present here that represents, and I'm also grateful for that. I have the endorsement from the Contra Costa County Building and Construction Trades Council, which oversees 21 local unions. I'm grateful for that support. I've got the Sheet Metal Workers Union, thank you. Eric Haynes, because I stand for labor, and we've got a lot of workers locally in my district that would stand to gain from jobs that we could, you know, bring to Concord if we would get certain things off the ground, like housing. And I've been a leader, and I've got good business acumen and accounting acumen, and I believe that, you know, the experience that I have is relevant to serving on the city council. And if you all vote for me, I can tell you that I am going to bring progress to Concord, and I'm going to listen to my constituents. Like I said, I pledged to hold a town hall once a month, so I can hear directly from the people that are in my district and in the City of Concord. And if we need to bring that town hall to them, or make it digital, or bring other[1627.23] them or make it digital or bring other languages, that we absolutely will. But I'd like to say I'm proud of what I stand for. I'm proud of the support that I have, and I look forward to serving this community if I get elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Laura Nakamura?
Thank you to the chamber for hosting this event tonight. I'm Laura Nakamura, and I'm running for Concord City Council because we can choose to make changes which will improve the lives of all Concord residents. The status quo doesn't work for everyone, and we need to be thinking about our future generations now. But these kinds of changes will not happen unless everyone gets engaged and votes and gets engaged in civic affairs. And I hope that everyone will vote. Many people have grown cynical about politics and cynical about politics in Concord. And I realize that many residents face daily challenges by making voting seem like a luxury, but it isn't. In order to make progress, it's a necessity that we vote. As a council member, it will be my job to represent the needs, the priorities, and the best interests of people in District Five and the city of Concord as a whole. As a council member, I will research and understand the real-life impacts of my decisions. I will make informed decisions to ensure our city and our businesses and our residents can be successful and thrive. I will work for transparency with regards to the Concord Naval Weapons Station project. I'm honored to have the endorsement of my own union, NUHW, SEIU 1021, AFSMI Local 57, Bay Area 350, the Sierra Club, the League of Women, League of Conservation Voters, and the sole endorsement of my party, the Democratic Party of Contra Costa County, and many other organizations and people in my community who lift up priority, equity, and diversity.
Thank you. Tim?
All right. Well, again, thank you so much to the Greater Concord Chamber of Commerce. We appreciate all the work you do here in Concord. And I think tonight kind of shows I'm so proud of the work that we have done over the last six years on the Concord City Council, representing not just District Five, but the entire city of Concord, working very hard, both right here in the city, both regionally and at a state level and at the federal, at the federal level, to be able to bring things home to Concord so that we can truly be a remarkable place. There's been a lot of things that have happened over the last few years, and the city has been faced with a lot of challenges. And I'm so glad that I've been a part of being able to help find those solutions and guide the city through some very difficult times. And so that's why I think everything that we've talked about today are all a lot of things that I have focused on. I focused on public safety, housing, infrastructure, safety, economic development. Those are all things that, they keep me up at night. They make sure that, those are things that I want to work towards finding those solutions here for the city of Concord. They're very important to me. And you can see that I will regularly reach out. We will try to come up with viable solutions that are things that are, all things that we can make happen within the city of Concord. And again, I truly thank everyone for being here tonight. If you'd like to reach out to me, please visit me on my website at timmegallion.com. And again, thank you, everyone, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Laura Hoffmeister?
Yes, thank you again for hosting this. As I mentioned, I'm a lifelong Concord resident and your councilmember. Proud of the many accomplishments that I've been able to make in our community over the years. We have a new senior center. We have bocce ball and now pickup ball courts, expanded the library hours, new park play equipment, expanded the Lime Ridge open space, free concerts downtown, and our farmer's market. We've established balanced budgets with appropriate 30% emergency reserve. We have marketing programs to attract visitors to our city and added programs to the police department to help retain police officers here, as well as having body cameras and license plate readers and drones for finding lost children and elderly seniors, also being used in accident and crime scene investigation. We have new office and commercial businesses, and now we see new housing starting to sprout up in our downtown with 1,200 units approved. We have expanded street repair programs, some of that starting away now. Added $120 million more to the capital improvement fund for streets. Establish a base reuse plan that has 65% open space. I will continue to serve, if reelected, to address the community needs such as affordable housing, homelessness, maintain our public safety, enhance public safety, and address the street and transportation infrastructure needs in our community. So I'd be honored to receive your continued support and vote this November. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Patty?
I'd like to say thank you to the chamber for sponsoring this and for encouraging me to be here. I'd also like to say thank you for the questions that were relevant for my position. I understand they have a lot more meaty questions, but thank you for the opportunity. I have some endorsements that I'm very proud of. I am also endorsed by the Democratic Party of Contra Costa County, the Contra Costa Building and Construction Trades and Council, Supervisor Karen Mitchoff, and many elected women. I'm very proud of that. Many elected. And I hope that you do recognize my relevant financial experience as I do this position. And last but not least, I thank you for electing me four years ago, putting your trust in me. And I hope that I have performed well enough to be elected again. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. And Quinn, take it home.
Thank you for having us here. And thank all of you for coming here and caring enough about Concord to come sit and talk to us or listen to us talk, I suppose, on your Tuesday, Wednesday? What day is today? Wednesday night. I appreciate it. I'm sure we all up here appreciate that. I have a few endorsements as well. The Democratic Party and Young Democrats of Contra Costa County, the Concord Communities Alliance. I didn't actually really go out and seek endorsements, and I'm not seeking funds. Every penny that's spent on my campaign is coming out of my own pocket. I'm not accepting contributions from businesses, from organizations. Individuals who want to donate to my campaign can all accept up to $100 per person. But I want to be really transparent about who I am, what I stand for, what I want for Concord, what I want this city that I live in to look like in the coming years. And I want to be a representative, not a politician. That's why, these are my notes. I was taking them as I went. I'm just another resident of Concord that wants to push for the Concord that I see in five and 10, five or 10 years. So, you know, if you listen to what I have to say, if you look at my website and read or read my flyers and you say, yeah, I agree with this, this woman. I feel the same way about things that she does, then great, vote for me. Vote for who, who most aligns with what your values are. And if I'm not that person, then don't vote for me. But I hope, I hope we all see the same Concord that I see. And I do hope you vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Quinn. And thank you, all of you. This has been really enlightening. I thought I knew most of you, but I learned tonight, I learned things about you that I didn't know before, which is a good thing to take away. So thank you. And thank you, Patty, for speaking it out.
Thank you.
We are done?
I have a closing.
Oh, you have a closing.
We just want to say on behalf of the chamber, we thank all of you for coming to participate tonight and taking the time. I know some of us had some long nights last night as well and coming up tomorrow with music and market. But we hope that this is informational for those who are watching and for those who will watch this replay. Again, this will be available on the chamber's YouTube channel after we are able to upload it. But we hope this is informational for you to come to the November ballots and you can make an educated vote. If anyone has any questions about the chamber and how many of these candidates have been involved with the chamber and you would like to become involved with the chamber, please come see myself. Williams, our membership director. Tamara is also our chair for the Government Economic Policy Committee. We'd be more than happy to share how you can become more involved. And with that, we're going to end it a little bit early, get you guys home, and we hope everyone has a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't move the gavel to the other side. What are you doing?